All right, I'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting for Perry Municipal Authority for February 4th, 2013 at 6:15. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Here.
Demant.
Here.
Duke. Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. We do have a quorum present. Authority member Duke contacted me a little earlier and she's feeling a little under the weather, and so we're going to give her an excused absence. At this time, I'd like to invite Pastor of the Church on the Square, Brian Aherne, if you would, to come to the podium and leave us in our opening prayer. Brian?
Well, thank you. Thank you for always having me. I appreciate it. So, let us pray tonight. Father, we are, as I walked over here, I was just so blessed. What a beautiful day you've given us in this community. Just beautiful weather. And, Father, I would be remiss if I didn't boldly ask that you would continue to, in your own way and in your own time, pour out the blessings of moisture for this community, for the farmers in this community that desperately need that, Father. And no matter when and how you choose to do that, we know, Father, you are sovereign. You are in control of all circumstances. Father, we come to unite with a meeting of people that represent this wonderful community. Father, I would ask in advance for the blessing on this meeting to give each and every member and person who's here tonight the sermon and wisdom to know when to ask questions and to know when to listen and to know when to encourage and to know when to be assertive. But more than anything, Father, I would pray that each one of us here tonight, even those that are listening, we think of one word, one word that is indicative of what you ask us to do in this world and in this community, and that is others. May our decisions be guided for others in this community, the people that don't have the resources, the people that desperately need things in this community that many of us have and are blessed with, and may we always think of others. May our decisions tonight, may the decisions here tonight, be based on others in this community. Father, we love you and we look forward to a great night, and I pray blessings over each person here and this meeting as a whole. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Brian, this time we'll move to item number one, the Consent Agenda. If you'd like to remove the single item from the consent agenda, you may do so. Otherwise, I'd like approval.
Move to approve.
Second. We have motion second to approve Consent Agenda as presented to you. Will there be discussion? Seen none, let's move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item number four, comments from those assembled. Anybody wish to make comments on items not on our PMA agenda, we'll take those from you. Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Seen none, we'll move to item number five, which is approval of post issuance compliance policy procedures manual. Council members, you have the background -- authority members, you have the background information in your packet. I think both Meredith and Bryce are prepared to answer any questions you have. It's pretty straightforward. This is a new requirement on us that the Authority is required to have this post insurance compliance program. And I think the most sizable recommendation this evening is not only for the approval, but that our CFO, Russ Meacham, be the one charged with compliance under the policy.
Move to approve.
Second. We have motion second to approve the post issuance compliance policy procedures manual. Will there be discussion? Discussion of questions? Yes, Gordon.
Will this be an annual approval?
No, I think once the manual's in place, it will continue.
Unless there's any changes by the IRS.
And then we'll amend the policy.
And the IRS never changed.
So, yeah, there'll be amendment next year.
Good question. Other questions? Questions or comments? Get your questions answered.
Yes.
We have motion second, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we move to item number six, Proclamations, Commissions, Reports, and Requires the Government Body. Seen none, we'll move to item number seven, New Business. Any new business needs to come before PMA. Seen none. Item number eight, move to adjourn. Second. We have motion second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Johnson.
Hi.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. All right, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Maryland City Council of the City of Perry for February 4th, 2013, 6:15. Roll call.
Stroller.
Here.
Demant.
Present.
Duke. Johnson.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Nation.
Here.
Wade.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Paul.
Here. Move to item number one, the Consent Agenda. Item wishing to be removed.
Make motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Second. We have motion second to approve Consent Agenda as presented to you this evening. Will there be discussion? Continued discussion? Needed discussion? Roll call, though.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade. Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item number four, comments from those assembled. Anybody wish to make comments on items not on our city council agenda? Now's your time. Comments from those assembled? Comments from those assembled? Seen none, we'll move to item number five, Proclamations, Commissions, Reports, and Requires the Government Body.
No proclamations about the brownies back there or anything? That'd be a combination, I suppose.
Maybe we should put that in writing.
Thanks, Quinn.
Thanks for the brownies, Quinn.
They were good.
All right, we'll move to item number six, and that's the City Manager's Comments.
I do have a few for this evening. In follow-up to the discussion at last week's -- last meeting regarding the OPA Cup Program, I'm pleased to report that the City of Perry's book was completed and submitted. And a big, big thank you to Dixie and Autumn, who's back there, and Brian Wheatley for pulling that together. They worked very hard, and we were able to submit that and cross that off our list, so we were very happy. Utility bills, some of you may have heard that when the utility bills arrived in their mailboxes this weekend, that some folks had some extremely high bills. And we received quite a few calls this morning at City Hall. And so, as the normal procedure, we proceeded to do rereads, and the rereads confirmed the readings were correct. So, upon further research and investigation, it was determined that prior -- a prior billing cycle had been under-read or underestimated. So, basically, what happened is that this one caught up the under-read from the prior billing cycle. So, we have been researching and compiling information. We don't have all the details yet, but, you know, what I want to do is say that customers who have a question about their bill, they should feel free to call or come in, come by City Hall. And if they're one of those that has a high water bill, we will certainly work with them in making payment arrangements so that, you know, it's not a big burden on them for one particular month. We regret sincerely that this has happened, and we apologize to those affected. The estimating reader -- meters, you only do as a last resort if there's, you know, six inches of snow and ice on the ground or whatever the case may be. So, that is not something that I condone, and, you know, we're looking into how this happened and why it happened. And I understand that something similar happened maybe last summer, August, September, somewhere in that area. And apparently, we thought we'd dealt with that situation appropriately, but possibly, possibly not. So, we will be addressing that and making sure that meters are read properly, accurately, and that the bills you receive are truly accurate. And because I know that once you have -- lose confidence in us, that you may be questioning us on other things. And so, I'm looking to regain the confidence of the utility customers that have been affected by this. And it is difficult to kind of understand how this works, but, you know, the reading cycles and all of that. But as I said before, we do apologize.
Can't people average their bills too, or do we do that?
We do that, but it's only -- they can only sign up for that during a particular time of year. Is that January?
They can sign up October, November, and December.
Okay, October, November, December.
Anybody that's on average billing probably didn't see that.
Probably didn't see the fluctuation, yeah. So, anyway, again, customers who are affected by that, please contact City Hall, or if you believe your bill was, you know, inaccurate, we're prepared to respond appropriately. So, I got an update from Mandy Seider on the Potomacry Project. She said that it would be about 30 to 60 days for the delivery, and that then training would be scheduled after that and probably towards the end of March, first part of April. And so, she will keep the City of Perry in the loop so that we can participate in the training, which will probably be at OSU at the Center for Local Governments. We're excited about that resource being made available. Previously, I know that code enforcement presented reports, status reports to the city council, and I think that's really helpful information for the council, and I'm going to -- I'm planning to reinstitute that report. First one will be probably a 2012 annual report for the year, and then we'll go to quarterly reports. And so, if any of you have particular interests in what you want to see in those reports, please let me know. I think that a picture says a thousand words, and we have lots of pictures to show you. So, you can look forward to that being on the future agenda. Hopefully, the next agenda, next meeting, we'll be able to have the annual report for 2012. So, anyway, other than that, I'm commented out.
Questions or comments for the City Manager? Questions or comments. All right, Mary, thank you very much. We'll move now to item number seven, which is Consider Approval Ordinance 2013-07, Amending Chapter 12 of the Perry Municipal Code 2004 by the Amendment to Section 12, 286 E5, Permitting Alternate Pavement Systems for Overflow Parking in Other Locations Where Vehicles Will Drive, Turn, Exit, or Park for Storage and Display of Materials. Council members, you would think that we would be done with this by now, but this is -- actually, I really want to make a big deal out of this because if we have folks at home, Gloria, if your newspaper readers don't think that what they say makes a difference, this is just yet another example where it does make a difference. Where we had a local citizen that was following our approval of this ordinance and our use of this ordinance through our processes, and actually did some research on his own and made some suggestions that I ultimately turned over to the Planning Commission, who reviewed it and are in complete and total agreement. And one of the main things that pushed this deals with the permeable paving that we've talked about around this council table, you know, for several meetings now. And really, it kind of got past me, and I think it got past most of us, that we were all talking a lot about rock, about a gravel drive. And by definition, my research has found, thanks to this citizen, that rock, gravel, is not permeable. It is not a permeable substance. And, you know, what happens is, is that it, over time, it packs down, and dirt and mud gets in between the craniumlets, and it's not permeable. And it took -- really took the citizen calling our attention to it for us to really get a true feeling and understanding. So, that doesn't mean that there might not be cases where rock works in a cage, which would be an impermeable substance. And then we would have permeable substances, which there are several examples, you know, all over the web. And I think the -- I think the Planning Commission can certainly give examples of that, too. So, we have a new ordinance with several amendments in it. We're addressing how we define, you know, we're defining it as instead of permeable, it's alternate paving systems. And so, you have permeable and impermeable systems. And then also, this citizen had concerns about when you use gravel or rock, it potentially can be carried out, you know, by tires and has a way of marking up the city roads, leaving marks, et cetera, and he was kind of concerned about that, too. After it went through the Planning Commission, Marvin, maybe you can add to this, but after it went to the Planning Commission, I think everybody recognized that these are good changes, and they're recommending those changes be done in the form of an amendment to this ordinance that was approved not so long ago. Marvin?
That's essentially the -- after, you know, I said, "Oh, yeah, I voted against it." But anyway, after that, you know, we agreed that it was flawed and needed to be corrected.
So, we have -- of course, Bryce did the amendments. We'll certainly be pleased to answer any questions that you might have. But we do believe that this is a much better ordinance, and it more accurately defines what it is that we're trying to address. Questions?
Is this only for C2, or is it C3? What is it?
Anytime you do a site plan.
This would be any commercial.
Any commercial.
Commercial sound.
I thought there was some commercial that had to be concrete or...
Well, it's still a draft. I mean, it's still at the Planning Commission and the council's option. They have to review it. But, you know, these types of materials can be used only if there's a site plan review process, and only if the Planning Commission recommends it, but ultimately, the city council approves it. Now, we also broadened it. It's not just overflow parking now. You know, it's also for, you know, for roadways and for storage of materials. But the entrance onto property always has to be concrete, always have to have concrete approaches. It just allows you more tools in your toolkit to work with -- to work with site plans. And of course, you know, there's two different -- it's alternative paving systems now, and there's paving systems where water does flow through, and paving systems where water does not flow through. So, it's important to be able to channel that water and get that water to proper drainage, you know, situations. But we've broadened it up, but the council and the Planning Commission will be the master of determining, you know, when and how it gets applied.
And will these be grandfathered in, like if somebody already has rock on their parking lot or whatever?
Well, if they come for a site plan, if they come for a site plan, this will, with respect to Harry uses addition, to the extent that this gets approved, I would see this as meeting that, although we understand that there may be...
You know, that's what we understand, but I don't know.
Yeah, we may not want to discuss that. It would -- it would make Harry uses proper.
Well, I was thinking of that.
As it is now.
On fur, there is some rock properties or parking areas. Would those be grandfathered in, or would they have to change?
Well, no. I mean, we can't force them to change. If they would come in with a site plan, though, with a site plan request because they wanted, you know, amendment to it, well, then it's all, you know, it's a brand-new start, and we can make recommendations for them to get their site plan approved if we wanted to. We could make them have all hard pavement, or we could allow them one of these alternate paving systems.
But that would be, no matter what, even if this didn't get approved, they'd have to go through the process.
Right. Yeah, they'd have to go through the process. This just gives you more tools in your -- you're more tools to provide development, not to lock it out. Now, I imagine that this -- that the adoption, this may spur some development. I heard at least one, somebody talked about some type of use that they wanted, and they would either do it if they had this alternative or not do it if they didn't. So, this very well may spur some development, but the council's going to have to determination when and where the application will be made, whether you want it on fur, whether you want it in places where you can see, and the like, on a case-by-case basis.
Additional questions or comments as it relates to the amendment?
I can make a motion to approve Ordinance 2013-07.
Second. We have motion second to approve the ordinance amending 2013-07, Check 12 of Perry Municipal Code 2004, Third Annual Supplement. Will there be discussion? Discussion. Seen none. Yes, vote approves the ordinance, no vote turns it down. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Bryce, we -- there's an emergency on the ordinance, but it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, well, it's on -- yeah, it's down here at the bottom.
Recommendation.
Under the recommendation, that would cover it.
Okay, so, we want a motion on the emergency.
So moved.
Motion second on the emergency. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Now, we move to item number eight. At number eight, we should consider the offer of Red Fork Investments Inc. for oil and gas lease for 100 acres at Perry Municipal Airport. I guess I can tell you what I know about it. Mary, you want to just take it? Go ahead.
Local attorney has submitted this on behalf of Red Fork for 100 acres on the north side of the airport. Initial offer was 250 an acre. We asked for a little more. We didn't state an amount, but they came back with an amount of 300. So, it's 300 an acre with three sixteenths participation. And so, it's a fair amount. I'd like for it to be more, but, you know, it's hard to turn down that amount of money, so...
What does this give them? Privilege?
They will -- they will not be drilling on the airport property. They will -- it's a non -- what do they call those? Non...
No facilities, no wells, no operations.
No, that's on the airport property. And they would have to be outside of the drilling rig wherever they put it. It would have to be outside the airport safe zone or clear zone. Is that correct, Ty?
Yes. They have to stay outside the safe zone.
No matter where it is.
What is the safety zone? In that particular area where they're talking about drilling, we're talking about half a mile west or east of the airport runway. And we're talking about 500, or 50,000 feet straight north.
And they've indicated that they plan to drill within the next six months. And there's a lot of -- already a lot of activity, oil and gas activity in that area.
Yeah, the same company is drilling right now in Dennis Stiken, and they just completed another well in Dennis Stiken. And I was told by one of the drilling superintendents upstairs, looking at eight wells north of the airport.
They're also looking at some of our other land out at the airport, some that we may not have leased and some that we do have leased that's subject to a water flood to see if that would be available also.
Pipe lines.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
There will be...
Pipe lines?
Yeah, there will be no facilities on the...
So, they can't put a pipeline across our area.
That's correct. That's what they're agreeing to. No facilities at all.
Do we have some of our other land leased to Red Fork?
Uh, yeah, we had. We're selling...
We're selling both waters.
We're selling the water.
Remember, there was something.
Nadel and Gusman is under the Perry Lake, and then we have this water flood, I forget, Chaparral.
Chaparral, that water.
Chaparral, and then this would be Red Fork up by the airport. Those are...
I just remember this name coming before or something.
Yeah, that was for a water purchase agreement.
Do we know what the going rate is per acre in that area up there on leases?
350 to 300.
I believe they're paying for 325.
Yeah, a year ago, it was dramatically less. The forced pool number is pretty close to the same amount.
Red Fork doesn't have this leased at the lake?
No, that's Nadel and Gusman.
I thought Nicky Leach did an opinion on something out there with Red Fork.
He may have. The agreement where we leased our property out there, and it may have been assigned to Red Fork, but it was Nadel and Gusman out of Tulsa who we entered into the oil and gas lease with.
That was during your...
Interim City Manager.
Yeah, because I was -- I mean, I've seen this name before. It was -- I thought it was when you were leading the city manager.
As an oil and gas lease?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. I must have been sleeping that day. I don't remember.
I thought, yeah, I mean, I thought they -- because we definitely remember that company.
Well, I know that we're selling them water, but I don't know as an oil and gas lease.
We're selling them water?
Well, we were.
Water happening currently. Yeah.
We could stop there.
No, not on the -- if we have contracts, we're honoring the contracts for the time being. It's only the sales of the water treatment plant that we've stopped.
I'm sorry.
Any other inquiries?
No, we haven't had -- no, no other inquiries. I mean, they're the ones drilling up there. But we haven't put it up for bid. There's no duty to put it up for bid, but, you know, you guys can, of course, do whatever you'd like to do. You can send it back for additional royalty. If you wanted to bid the property, you could put it up for, you know, bid, see what oil companies would be interested. But since they're the ones drilling there, I mean, I don't know what the interest would be.
Actually, I have a new one staked out across the road. So, this is the group that's doing it up there.
They also got all the leases up there. I don't know if another oil company could come in and...
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, especially when they couldn't put a rig on it anyway.
Right.
They'd have to come in from the -- you know, they'd have to come in horizontally.
Right.
And if it's all leased up by Red Fork around it, there's no place for it to come in.
Well, every -- I know that everything north of the airport, north of the turnpike, is leased by Red Fork right now. And I talked to Dennis Stiken and a couple others up there. They've leased all theirs to them. Well, Ty said something about 50,000 feet. That's almost 10 miles.
Well, it's a conical...
I think it's 5,000.
Aircraft comes in, you can't have -- you can't have anything of any height out for so far because of the way they come in on the slope and leave on the slope from the ends of the runway up for 50,000 feet.
It's based on a three-to-one, is what it's based on. And as you further you go with the further -- up 5,000 feet, you're talking about an airplane going to be at probably 10,000 feet. So, they're not going to run into a drilling rig. But this is the way the FAA requires you to lease the airspace. And if he's -- if the drilling rig is shorter than your airspace going out, they can use it. But in this case, they're drilling right off the end of our airport. So, they're going to have to go to the east or west and horizontal then.
Make a motion we approve the oil and gas lease with Red Fork.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the oil and gas lease, which equates to $300 bonus and three sixteenths. To be discussed. Seen none, we'll move to a vote.
Stroller.
Yes.
Demant.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman. Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. All right, now we move to item number nine, which is convening the executive session on matters pertaining to economic development at the Perry Industrial Park or Perry Commercial Park. Public disclosure would interfere with the development implementation of agreements pursuant to 25 OS 307 C10. And we do have a need to convene.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion second to convene the executive session. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Okay, I entertain a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
We have motion and a second by everybody else. Roll call, please.
Stroller.
People want to be...
Yes.
Yes.
I could perhaps say yes or here.
Yes.
We were doing...
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Any action needs to be taken as a result of executive session?
Make a motion we approve the economic development agreement between the City of Perry and 3S Leasing LLC.
Second.
We have motion second to approve the economic development agreement between 3S and leasing LLC in the City of Perry. and Leasing LLC in the City of Perry. Discussion, comments, before we move to a vote. Seeing none, votes in order.
Strong.
Yes.
Demant.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Norman.
Yes.
Nation.
Yes.
Wade.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Any other action needs to be taken as a result of executive session? Seeing none, move to item number 12.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion second to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Strong.
Yes.
Yes.